If everyone could just take a -- here, I'll just officially -- I know. Stick out. Please take a moment and silence your cell phones. Welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Zelda. Of course, we're going to do national. So we're going to begin with our proclamation, National 2-1-1 Month. And I have in my notes here that Marla Brown and Fire Chief Scott Burnett are here. If there's anyone else here associated with this proclamation, please, me be down there.
Sure, I'm Marla Brown, the 2-1-1 Director for United Way Asheville. David Bailey is the CEO of United Way. Deion Greenley is with our Resource Development Department. And then I think you all know Scott. He's also the Vice Chair of our 2-1-1 Committee.
All right, don't all come back this way. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to begin by reading this. Whereas every hour of every day, someone in the United States needs essential services from basic human needs such as food, affordable housing, and health care, to securing adequate counseling, transportation, employment, or care for a child or aging family member. And whereas 2-1-1 is a free and easy-to-remember telephone number connecting people to critical health and human services available in their community. In addition, 2-1-1 improves the way in which people learn about and connect with the services they need. And whereas United Way of Asheville and Buncombe County, a nonprofit organization, has since the early 1970s provided information and referral services via a 24/7, 365 days a year call service that is accessible to everyone regardless of the language spoken or physical ability. Whereas 2-1-1 provides confidential, judgment-free, and compassionate interactions with certified and trained 2-1-1 referral specialists who are able to help people get to the root of their concerns and who can provide available options for health and human services assistance. Whereas 2-1-1 provides an online searchable database of more than 2,700 health and human service programs in western North Carolina available online via the NC211.org website. The word's not in here, but I believe it means a website. Whereas 2-1-1 serves as a support system for emergency management to help disseminate critical resource information during a disaster and provide citizens a long-term connection to relief and recovery services. And whereas in 2018, 2-1-1's across the nation responded to more than 12.8 million requests for help nationally, and North Carolina 2-1-1 Asheville responded to more than 40,000 from local citizens. Now therefore, I ask for Manheimer Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim February 2019 as National 2-1-1 Month in the City of Asheville, and urge the citizens of Asheville to support the human services, information, and referral services offered in the City of Asheville, County of Buncombe, and across North Carolina through NC211.
Thank you very much for taking your time to acknowledge the work that we've done and how much we appreciate this community's support. So thank you.
Thank you.
The second proclamation we have for tonight is Zelda Fitzgerald Day. And I have here that Jim McKenzie is here to receive this. And if you've got anyone else with you, please feel free to come on up. The Vice Mayor will deliver this proclamation.
Whereas Zelda Fitzgerald visited and lived in Asheville for the final portions of her life, facing life as diagnosed schizophrenic, financial hardships, and rather archaic medical practices of her day. And whereas Zelda endured the stigmas of being a woman with mental illness during a time when most medical treatments were decided by husbands. And whereas Zelda continues to stand as an icon of the Jazz Age for boldness and creativity, and especially for a world that still seeks and fights for equality. And whereas F. Scott declared Zelda the first flapper during the roaring twenties, yet she was able to break free of that stereotype, discovering her own voice with dance, writing, and painting, all the while living in the shadow of her notable and controversial counterpart. And whereas Zelda perished in a suspicious fire at Asheville's Highland Hospital on March 10, 1948. And whereas Zelda Fitzgerald Day in Asheville raises funds for Aurora Studios, providing art space and support for people experiencing mental illness needs. And whereas this is the only local celebration honoring this fascinating woman with events all throughout the city during the week of March 9 through the 15th, including an art exhibit at Wedge Studios, readings and discussions of Zelda's writings at Malaprop's bookstore and cafe, a panel discussion regarding links between mental illness and creativity, and a roaring twenties dance party at the block off Billmore. And now therefore, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, does hereby proclaim March 10, 2019, as Zelda Fitzgerald Day in Asheville, and encourages all citizens to take part in celebrating her life. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, thank you. My name's Jim McKenzie. I just want to thank everyone, especially the city, for their continued helping us recognize this, what I think is a very worthy day. The idea is really kind of threefold. First of all, to bring attention to this really unique, wonderful, amazing woman that lived and died in this town. Two, to raise money for Aurora Studios, which is a really great nonprofit that helps people facing mental illness with create a safe art space for them. And in the future, I would love it to continue to recognize local Asheville ladies who have that Zelda Fitzgerald spirit. That's how we want to do it in the future more. And I guess Zelda Fitzgerald Day, ABL, on Facebook is how to find all of the events and to keep up with us. So I hope to see everyone in something this year. Thank you.
Next, we have the Consent Agenda. Are there any questions, comments, or a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I have one question about item G, the lease agreement with the Men's Garden Club. That's -- I think this is clear, but I just want to make sure that there's no cash exchanging hands, they're not paying rent, their rent is essentially in-kind services to the city. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone who wants to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, under Presentations and Reports, we only have one, and it is just a report only that you can look at virtually on our agenda, an update on home state permits and short-term rentals. We have two items on the Public Hearings Agenda, but first I need a motion to continue item B to March 12, 2019.
I'll make a motion to move the public hearing to be continued until March 12, 2019 as related to the property at 130 and 9999 Rock Hill Road.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to continue item B to March 12. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we have one public hearing item, which is item A. Stephanie Monson-Doll is here on staff to talk to us about this. This is a public hearing to consider adoption of the Tree and Riparian Enhancement Plan as a standalone plan and as an amendment to the 2004 Wilma Dykman Riverway Master Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come forward today and ask you to consider adopting the Tree and Riparian Enhancements Plan as a standalone plan, a small area plan for the River Arts District, but also as an update to the 2004 adopted Wilma Dykman Riverway Master Plan. I'm honored and excited to have worked with a variety of partners on this plan that generally recommends improvements to the natural environment, specifically water quality improvements and tree canopy and riparian area improvements for what we call the Rad-Tip Study Area, which may be better recognized as a two-mile corridor. Going to show you this area right here. A two-mile corridor along the French Broad River on the east bank. And so, starting at that red dot, that red dot is the Captain Bowen Bridge. Some people know it as the Smoky Park Bridge. Starting right underneath that and running along two miles all the way down to the new development at the Founding is what they're calling it, the new development down there. So it's quite an extensive area, and the plan suggests about 15 projects. They range in complexity from something that can be completed in a weekend, such as a pocket pollinator garden that could be done completely with volunteer help through partnerships with the city, to more complex projects such as a stream restoration on the Cote Branch that would likely take over a year to plan, design, and build. This plan was funded entirely by a grant from the Duke Watershed Resources Foundation. We're going to recognize that we pulled together about 75 different partners over the course of two weeks and focus groups, and that was done by Equinox Environmental. So they did a great job, including the lead environmental planner, Kim Williams, helped us out with that process. That community engagement process was pretty innovative. We also engaged UNCA in an art workshop at our Arts and Culture Building at 14 Riverside Drive, resulted in the creation of some interpretive signage for the area. We were also able to work directly with Greenworks and some private property owners and others to install the Big Fish. So hopefully, all of you have seen that sculpture that is now a landmark down in the River Arts District. So one of the most exciting things about this plan is it addresses the need that a community has pointed out to us, and that is while this plan really just underscores policy direction that you have already provided us through adopting elements of the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, the Wilma Dykman Plan, as I mentioned, also the Riverside Drive Development Plan, Council's strategic vision, which talks about having a clean and healthy environment. What it does is it really clarifies how we're going to get there, and it provides the community with a framework to approach the city and say, I want to partner on a project where we can come down and do some work right here in this riverfront. So as we're rapidly approaching, in about a year, the completion of the Rad-Tip Project, which includes tons of new open space, river recreation, the Greenway, people are wanting to get down into this area. This plan also included engagement with the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission pretty extensively. They did recommend to council as part of their previous year's annual strategic priorities that there needed to be additional focus on water quality. So this is something that addresses that advisory board's interest. This plan also received a unanimous recommendation at Planning and Zoning, and City Council Committee at Planning and Economic Development also recommended that it be approved by City Council. Just some details on what the impact of adopting this plan would be. So adopting this plan, just like adopting any other conceptual plan, does not bind you to implementing the plan or paying for the implementation of any plan, but it does provide staff with an understanding of how we can work with partners. You already have a five-year CIP that has a significant number of projects, and none of the projects that are in this plan are technically within that CIP. However, we likely -- I'm pulling up here a project list. We would likely consider maybe after that five-year CIP participating in some of the additional stormwater enhancements or larger projects. And let me explain what you're looking at here. We had as part of this plan cost estimates done for every single project. That was part of the requirement of us even considering bringing this forward to you. And these are those cost estimates. What you're looking at in green, those top three projects, those actually the community has already picked up, they're underway, and they are -- there's no costs, additional costs to the city. Already working on those. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are projects that partners at Mountain True, Riverlink, and Greenworks, and a few others are interested in applying for grants right now, including the Five Star Urban Water Grant to work as a partnership that's going to improve water quality. The grant would not be limited to those projects, but it would include all of those projects. So in total already, there's about $54,000 of the 485, we're just going to estimate, $1,000 worth of projects that are likely to be completely covered by the community, and the plan has not even been adopted yet. So that's a pretty good sign, we feel. Some of these projects, I bolded them, the Craven Street Conveyance Enhancement. Conveyance is just structure to carry water. And the Cote Branch, those are, you know, stream restoration projects. Those I bolded because I would expect that the community would need significant city participation in order to implement those projects. So perhaps in a 10-year CIP, you may be asked by the community or staff to look at implementing those projects. Those are significant fiscal impacts that I could see. And they're really good qualifying projects for a variety of state, local, and national programs that work to enhance water quality. So we feel pretty strongly that the fiscal impact to the city would not be for that total amount, but for 50% or less. So as I mentioned, this project is aligned with all of our adopted plans and really just underscores and enhances the current policy direction that we have from City Council. We have done a thorough engagement process, including going through our advisory boards and commissions. And staff recommends that you do adopt this plan as a small area plan for the River Arts District, and also as an update to the Wilma Dykman Riverway Master Plan. One last really important piece for you to know is that this plan only considers public property. So this plan is not suggesting any improvements, restrictions, regulations, or -- and there's no onus to the private sector for the adoption of this plan. I'm available to answer any questions, and I do want to just underscore that we thank those organizations that I mentioned earlier for putting so much effort into this plan, including the Duke Water Resources Foundation, who paid for the plan in its entirety. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand. You would have three minutes to speak and just state your name. Yes, sir. You've got to come up to the microphone.
Just as a reminder, Esther, make sure that he knows it's a comment on this item.
Oh, okay, this is for comments on this item.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, please just state your name, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Vince. I'm going to keep it short because I want to talk more. Sound like a good idea. I think y'all guys should really do it. Put more plants in Asheville, you know, because plants live on, they grow beautiful, and they stay up, you know what I'm saying? They actually, it's some nice plants, is what I'm trying to say. So hopefully, y'all guys could, you know, go ahead and get their projects approved.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else wishing? Yes.
Hi, Dawn Chavez, Executive Director of Asheville Greenworks. I just want to express my strong support for this plan. Greenworks, Mountain True, Riverlink, and other nonprofit entities and institutions were heavily involved in the development of the plan, and it's one of the strongest plans that I have seen. There is a lot of collaboration that is embedded in the plan for the future implementation over the next 25 years. There will be a collaborative project leadership team that will guide the implementation of the plan, and Greenworks is very supportive of all of the elements of it, especially the pollinator meadows and pocket parks that will be part of the plan, as well as trees restoring the riparian buffer. So I hope you will support this plan. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion. I move that we adopt the Tree and Riparian Enhancement Plan as a small area plan for the River Arts District and as an update to the Wilma Dykman Riverway Master Plan in that the Plan, one, supports council's desire to create a cleaner, healthier environment, and a well-planned and livable community, as adopted in their hour 2036 vision. Number two, promotes a best practice of periodically updating existing adopted plans so they remain relevant and help guide community interest in partnering with the city to implement plans. Three, supports improvement of water quality, an important part of the emerging river recreation economy. And four, aligns with the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, supporting goals contained in the harmony with the natural environment theme.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That concludes our public hearings agenda. Under New Business, we have one item, and that is a resolution adopting a down payment assistance policy. And Paul D'Angelo is here to speak on this policy.
Good evening. Thanks so much for having me tonight, Mayor, City Council, City Staff, City Manager, here to talk about the Down Payment Assistance Policy we put together at the Community Development Department. Again, Paul D'Angelo with Community and Economic Development, and happy to be here to talk about this policy.
Maggie's going to get you in show mode here.
Thanks, Maggie. So we'll be talking a couple of things here tonight about community partners, some of the policy highlights that we have here, to talk about marketing and our next steps so that we make sure that this is actually going to be a usable policy that we can take out into the community. This is probably one of the most important slides in kind of the six-to-eight-month process of putting this policy together, of all the people we're able to talk to and work with these partners and bring their expertise and best practices to this policy, from talking to the Housing Finance Agency, our local folks, MHO and Habitat, mortgage companies, communities, and schools, our realtors, the folks at Federal Home Loan Banks. It was a really great conversation, learning experience, so that we could kind of come up with the best policy that we could come up with, and it was a big thanks to those conversations and working with those community partners. So the purpose of the Down Payment Assistance Policy is to provide residents of the City of Asheville and those who want to become residents of the City of Asheville with affordable homeownership financing opportunities and a way to use DPA to lower that monthly mortgage payment to an affordable level. The policy, we have two funding sources. We have $1 million of the housing bond money for individuals and families with an income under 80% of the area median income, or AMI. And all of that $1 million, we set aside $500,000 for folks making under 60% of area median income until December 31 of 2021, to give those individuals and families a little time to prepare for homeownership. And these are some of the things that came out of the conversations with the community where we really learned what was needed. And in addition to the $1 million in the bond fund, and we also have $400,000 in partnership with the Federal Home Loan Bank of Atlanta and their Community Heroes Program, this is going to be available to full-time City of Asheville employees and full-time City of Asheville school employees with family incomes between 80 and 120% of area median income. Some additional policy highlights on property requirements. Property will be bought, the property bought must be within the city limits, the home must be the primary residence of the borrower, the home must be a single-family residence, which includes condominiums and townhomes. If there's any developers out there listening, we'd love to see more condominiums and townhomes out there. By nature, they can be a more affordable product. First-time homebuyer requirement, borrowers must be first-time homebuyers, meaning the borrower may not have borrowed, I'm sorry, owned a home within the last three years. The borrower must be able to provide at least $1,000 in down payment assistance, or sorry, in down payment for home, for their home, for his or her, for their assets. So that can include money for closing costs or money that's put into perhaps the appraisal. So we will look at that as an income that can qualify. And also a counseling requirement, borrowers will be required to participate in at least one HUD-approved homebuyer education course approved by the banker or lender, most likely something through OnTrak or one of our other HUD partners. So the maximum loan is going to be based on that area median income, and it can be no more than 20% of that home value. And for folks and the individuals and families making under 60% of AMI, they can borrow up to $40,000 in down payment assistance. If you're between 60 and 80% of AMI, some of the folks are using our bond funding as well, you can get up to $35,000 in down payment assistance. And for those folks at between 80 and 120% AMI, who are taking the source funding from the Federal Home Loan Bank partnership, up to $25,000 in down payment assistance, and the minimum loan requirement's going to be $5,000. So eligible borrowers that meet all requirements will have funds reserved once they're qualified banker or lender, contact the City of Asheville requesting down payment assistance, and provides a completed loan application, including a copy of the offer of purchase and contract. A couple additional things here, there's no monthly payments or interest associated with a down payment program loan. The loan is a 30-year loan. Unless otherwise noted, repayment of the down payment assistance loan is required when the home is sold, refinanced, the title is otherwise transferred, or the home seizes to be the borrower's primary residence. There's additional detail in the policy, so any questions there from anyone listening, we always recommend that they take a look at the policy. And lastly, an important highlight of the repayment, in addition to the repayment of the original DPA loan amount, the borrower will be required to pay a percentage of the original DPA loan amount based on the appreciation value of the home, something we're calling the appreciation payment. And this came out of the conversations where some of the folks out there who do down payment assistance want to pay back with some appreciation, coming up with something between a grant and a loan, and then also taking some things from NCHFA where they have a decrease in the amount paid back the longer in a home. So this is the math portion of the presentation, so a couple of easy ones here. If the home is purchased for $2,000, if we could get more of that in Asheville, that would be lovely. $200,000 with $20,000 in down payment assistance. If the house is sold 15 years later, and it sells for $250,000, that's a 25% increase in value. So when it comes to paying back that down payment assistance, they'll pay $25,000 back, which is 20,000 times that 1.25. If the home is purchased for $200,000, and again, the borrower took $20,000 in down payment assistance, and the house is owned and the primary residence of the homeowner, they stay there for 30 years, the down payment loan is forgiven in its entirety. This is math with a calculator, so I'm going to read this pretty clearly here, but this is something we came up in the compromise, which I think worked out really well, and we got some good feedback on this, and hopefully, everyone agrees. Beginning in year 21, the appreciation payment will decrease by 10% annually until year 30. So as an example, if the home is purchased again, $200,000, and they've asked for $20,000 in down payment assistance, and the house is sold 25 years later for $300,000, that's a 50% increase in value. However, the payback would only be $25,000, 20,000 times 1.25. And that's because, again, with no appreciation payment decrease, you would expect that the down payment payback would be $30,000. But with that 10% decrease happening annually, beginning in year 21, the homeowner earns a 50% decrease, five years, 10% per year, which equals 50% of that $10,000 appreciation payment. So that equals a $5,000 additional payment, hence we come up with a $25,000 repayment. This probably sounds more complicated than it is.
And just to be clear, if they sell in year 31, they owe nothing.
That's correct. The loan is forgivable after year 30, the whole thing.
And Paul, if they do, you know, sell the house in less than 30 years, will the money that comes back to the city just roll back into the down payment assistance program?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And then we wanted to make sure, you know, again, with the policy or plan, that these things don't sit on the shelf, that we're getting ahead of it with some of our marketing efforts so that we can really get the word out there. So working with the Cape team, the folks in community engagement, you know, you can see some things happen. There'll be a press release tonight, some activities with the Federal Home Loan Bank for that $400,000. We're going to do an event on May 28 to get the word out, kind of maybe a mock homeownership center, which is something we've talked about, so that we can really get the word out that this assistance is available. And then some of the internal communication will happen as well with One Asheville, and especially when it comes to working with our staff members in the City of Asheville. So we'll be out there for that marketing. Once the policy is approved, we've already got a good amount of notes and information from those partners on underwriting, so we're going to take that a step further next and kind of evaluate all those questions to make sure we've got clear guidance in our down payment assistance underwriting standards. And it's the intention that this down payment assistance policy be a living document that can be evaluated and adjusted as needed to be fully effective in its efforts to provide the residents of the City of Asheville and those who want to become residents of the City of Asheville with affordable homeownership financing opportunities. So if we find it's not working, or there's areas that might be improving, we want to be able to step back and take a look at that. And then again, one of the biggest things here is going back to that community. All those folks that we worked with, I know I'll probably be sent out to about the 24 mortgage reps out there with NCHFA who are working with affordable loans and affordable families, so I'll meet with them individually to make sure that they understand that this is out there, as well as all of these folks here that, again, were a big help. And that also includes our internal committees of AHAC, HCD, and city staff as well. Big thanks to Kathy Ball for helping us out on this policy and taking a good look at it. This slide was normally going to be like, you know, flashing, you know, $1 million in bond funding, $1 million in bond funding, but it is a question slide, but we're excited to actually get a few things moving here for everybody. I've got a staff report and a resolution, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thanks to a bunch of people, starting with you. You know, I think when we first started talking about this at HCD several months ago, it felt, and we started getting presentations about it, it felt, it felt messy, it felt, I didn't, I didn't see the path to how, I knew we would get there, but I couldn't see it. And you have led this ship ably through these, I think, really complicated waters. And, and I think also I want to thank my colleagues on HCD for, you know, really helping to focus this policy on the people in our community who need it the most, and appreciate you and Deborah and Kathy being responsive to that and figuring out how to do that. And then also just our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, who just, I think, put an enormous amount of thought into reviewing this and also providing comments. So just thanks to everybody. This is a, I feel like this is a really big milestone for us, and it's a tool that, I don't know how many other communities have this, do you know how many other communities have this?
It's not something I've seen out there, especially around North Carolina, so using the bond funding for down payment assistance is a nice way that we're strategically targeting the many aspects of affordable housing, so.
So this is a very special program. I've actually already gotten questions about it from friends and neighbors wanting to know about it and how they can access it. So word is already getting out there, and, and so I'll just say to the general public, all the thousands of people who are watching, please come, come, get this money. We, we want to spend it, and, and we want to put people in houses. So thank you again.
And we're happy to, they can call us at the Community Development Department at any time, and we can help guide them with any questions that they might have.
I just echo Julie and say thank you again. And, you know, just another caveat to remind people that there is, you did it in your presentation, is half a million dollars that are earmarked for those, that 60% under the area median income. So there is a chunk that is set aside to make sure that those who really need it can, can access it, and we have to spend it by October 2023, so.
Apply.
Yes, definitely apply.
Yes, we're, those great partners and those grassroots efforts to have those voices that reminded us of that, and all went into the policy as best we could, so, yes, thank you.
Okay, we, we need a motion, and then we can take public comment on this item.
Make motion to adopt the down payment assisted program?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? You've, you've got to come up to the microphone. Believe it or not, this is actually televised, although televised isn't quite the right word. So these cameras have to catch you right there.
Yeah, I understand.
And there are thousands of people.
Right.
Watching, watching from home.
But don't get nervous.
No, I'm not nervous. Last time I was nervous, you know, I feel real good that, you know, somebody that actually willing to give Asheville, you know, a chance. You know, when I first heard her conversation, she was kind of like stuttering, like, you know, how the train just jump off the tracks. That's what kind of, that's what kind of sound like. But I really think y'all guys need to get Asheville, you know, a chance with this program that they got going on, because most people that get disability, you know, the government could actually help y'all with that as well. You know, they could set up funding so that y'all can make sure that money go back into the program, what he just said. So, you know, I think y'all need a partnership with them and get rid of Lee Walker Hikes, PVA, Hillcrest, all the types of apartments, and build it back up. So, you know, feel real good about it, though. So thank y'all guys.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on the motion to approve the down payment assistance program? All right, now, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. That includes our printed agenda. We have a closed session, I have, but we're first going to take our open public comment. I do have one person who signed up to speak, Mr. Priestur. Yep, so you know the drill, back to the microphone.
Well, this time I'm going to make sense. I'm going to get to the bottom of it. What I would like for you, Ms. Esther, that's how you pronounce your name, have you ever thought about doing a community, you know, parade, which is some people that might not know you, like the younger kids, you know, the adults? They know that we have a mayor here, but some people might not know you. So that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, how can, you know what I'm saying, you, like, reach to the community? You know, that's what I want to figure out. Like, you, you know, like, being out there in the community, letting people know, you know, who I am, this what I'm working on, and, you know, like, far as, like, the APD, you know, Asheville, I mean, Asheville Police is good, like, some people might look at it like, oh, they bad, they horrible, but it's not one time that I've seen Asheville had a parade with the law enforcement, fire department, and with yourself included as well. So I think that'll be a good idea for you to be a part of the community and show people like, look, this what I'm bringing to the table. You know, because to be honest, I've never seen a picture of you, I didn't know, like, like, who you was until the reception was like, well, her name is Esther. I was like, Esther? I was like, are you serious? There's no offense, but, you know, it's like, I'm not trying to make fun of your name, but at the same time, you know, I was really thrilled about it. I was like, Esther? I was like, I know I got a weird name, Divizio, but, you know, I'm not trying.
It is biblical.
Yeah, it is, but at the same, but see, at the same time, you know, now I know who our mayor is, and that's made me feel good, and, you know, more meetings I come up, you know, I could be myself, you know, I don't have to be nervous and, you know, freaked out because, you know, all of y'all standing in front of y'all. So, you know, I'm going to treat, I'm going to treat y'all like teammates, you know, and try to get used to, you know, saying y'all personalities, just y'all trying to get used to my personality. But I would like for you to come out to the community more, reach out to the people. And as far as PVA, Hillcrest Apartments, you know, I would like to see a change for them. I think Asheville PD need to be on every interest to stop all the drugs going in, all the guns, and, you know, like, a lot of bad things goes in apartments. So I figure if you had the police out there constantly 24/7, there ain't going to be no drugs, ain't going to be no killing, you know, or nothing like that, and the news ain't going to have nothing to talk about. Because I want you to be better than the next governor, you know, like, the next mayor, you know, like, over to the next state, which is South Carolina, I've done some research, which is lizard ground. I want you to be better than them, you know. I want you to be able to let the community to know, my name is Esther, this is what I bring to the table, you know, regardless of people liking it or not. I guess that's my time, but.
Thank you.
But yeah, I want you to think about that, man, you know, really think about that, reach, reach out to the community. You know, I appreciate y'all guys, now I got to be on my journey. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but if there's anyone wishing to speak, please just raise your hand. Okay, we have a closed session motion. Are we ready with the closed session motion?
I move the Asheville City Council going to close session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of General Statutes, a law that makes information privileged and confidential in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31810A3. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A1. To consult with the attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the city-client privilege between the city and attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit or potential lawsuit. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A3. To consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, and conditions of appointment of an individual public officer and employee, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A6. And to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A through 168, the Personnel Privacy Act, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina, North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A1.
All right, sorry, we have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. And we will adjourn from the closed session.